It's a new day Noonan. Yes, it is. And I am Papa Roach, who could be a coach. I am Daddy Long Legs and even longer arms, if you know what I mean, baby. I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what I mean there, but it's been said and can't, can't go back. You're not allowed to say something on a podcast and then delete it and try again. So it is now in the, in the universe, um, the things I have said. This is the exact right moment for you to be here, for you to be alive. That's how, that's how we, we, we try to think over at Team Harold, that this is the exact right moment for you. And you are choosing it to listen to Noonan Podcasts with Harold. Likely you are doing something else, but maybe not, maybe you are laying flat. You've got darkness surrounding you. The only thing you hear right now, and those itty bitty baby ears of yours, is the sound of my voice. And probably the fridge and maybe a cat eating, um, AC might be going. There's a lot of, um, we live by Sprayberry, so you might be hearing the sound of vomiting, um, nearby. Could be that too. So it could be, it could be a host of, of noises. Um, but I say that out of love. I love you vomiting customer of Sprayberry. I'm here for you. You can find me at Noonantimewithharold.com. Noonantimewithharold on Facebook, NoonantimewithHarold on Instagram. And of course you can find the podcast Noonan Podcast with Harold. Anywhere, anywhere you enjoy podcasts, just by searching Noonan Podcast with Harold. Then follow along, listen, download, love us. Today is part two. We're finishing up or picking up exactly where we left off. Our episode of our interview with Tim Ryan. He is here. He's here to talk more about what he brings to the political table. He's here to play some fun trivia games and he's here to try to deal with me for another 20ish minutes. And truly, if a man can do that, is there anything else we need from them? If, if a grown man can handle me, oh wait, no, this is sounding kind of erotic. And this, this is not an erotic podcast at all. This is a very professional interview.
So my wife was the real, the real catalyst to say, hey, honey. She probably got sick of hearing me talk about politics, but we sunk a lot of money into Coweta County. You know, I bought the land. We're financing the house out of our own money. And you know, as we spent our nest egg to stay here. And I mean, I'm going to die in Coweta County, you know, this is it. This is, we're not moving anywhere else. There's no more stepping stone. And so what happens in this community is important to me. And I grew up in Stone Mountain, which is, go there now. It's not, there's nothing left. There's a small little town, but it's not a functioning community, the same way that Noonan is. And there's a lot of different reasons of how that happened, but I feel like I see a different story for Noonan, but a similar ending, which is just too many people, too much density, a degradation of services, not enough revenue that's going to support the growth. I mean, just a myriad of things that I think, hey, I'm not seeing people. There are some commissioners that I agree with, but the one that I'm seeking to, to take his seat is one that I, I don't necessarily know these last two terms have been in the best interest of Noonan.
Who's that?
Bob Blackburn.
Bob Blackburn?
Yes, he is, uh, he'll be running for his fifth, uh, seat, which also says that I, I'm not sure it's within my power to do so, but I would certainly love to see term limits.
Yeah.
For that, I mean, four, maybe that's 16 years. If it was 12, I'd be okay with that too, three terms. Um, and you know, I'm not trying to express any ageism because I don't care how old you are. I think that there should just be a certain amount of time where you're able to make a difference. And 12 years should, should be enough and then bring somebody else in with some ideas to move it. When you have people that have been in power for 40 years, that's a long time. And so that means everything good comes with you, but also everything bad kind of comes with you, you know? Um, so term limits will be something that again, I'm not sure that's in my purview, but as a Congress, as a commissioner, I would excuse me, hope to say, hey, guys, let's put this on there. I'm not sure the guys that are on their fourth term and hear me say that are going to want to do that.
No.
But.
I mean, if I was in their position, I'd be like, nah.
Right.
That's one of those things.
But it's one of those things. I'm not campaigning on it per se, but I do think that it is something that government needs to really take a look at is term limits.
Is this your first time getting into politics?
It is. I mean, except for running for like, you know, class treasurer in 10th grade.
Did you get the part?
I did. I got elected.
Alright.
In 10th grade.
Did you do a good job?
I mean, they had probably the best prom they've ever had. That's what we had to do is as the 10th grade, we had to help support the, uh, uh, prom. That was essentially our entire function.
See, I was homeschooled, so when people tell stories about high school and proms, I'm like, oh, okay. Cool. Sounds, I only know what the movie show it like, so I have no idea what the prom.
Well, apparently Noonan is a huge homeschooled community, but Coweta in general. I mean, you could just look at that from the data. Uh, if you look at the schools in Coweta County as a whole, I learned all this during the 581 bill debacle, when they were, whether they were opting or whether they'd opt out, you know, House Bill 581. But if you look at it, Coweta County in almost 10 years has not increased the student population. It's run about 22, five to 23, back to 22. It's not increased. So how can the fastest growing county in Coweta, with all the neighborhoods and all the people not increase the student population?
I didn't know that.
Well, there must be through, either through Trinity exploding or some of the other private schools that are sort of around, or really just the increase in homeschooling. I mean, that's what I could, that's all I can really figure it in because I would have expected the, the Coweta County school system to increase their numbers. Um, I know they're certainly increasing their budgets. Um, 66 cents of every dollar in tax money in Coweta County goes to the school system. That means the entire county, fire, police investigations, you know, not trash collection, because that's all privatized, but all the services have to be managed with 33 cents of every dollar. That's a lot to get done, you know? Uh, education is the, I think the school is the largest employer in Coweta County is, is the Coweta County Board of Education, so.
So this first jump into politics, when, when does this election take place? When does, like, you're kind of just popping up as a name.
Yeah, I'm kind of ahead of the, I'm ahead of the game a little bit, um, because I, I've submitted all my paperwork. Uh, technically the paperwork I think is in January is when it officially starts. And then every month you have to start submitting your campaign contributions. I went ahead and declared it early so I can go ahead and start accepting money a little bit earlier in fundraising. Um, but January is the qualifying and then after that, excuse me, uh, May 19th is the primary because it's a, it is a partisan race unlike the city council or the mayor race in Noonan, those are nonpartisan. It is a partisan race, so I'm on the Republican ticket. So if any Republicans are running, they'll have to fight it out in the primary. Then after the primary, there's only one, you'll run against the declared Democrat and you'll be on the November, I think it's 7th, 4th or 7th. It's the first Tuesday in November is how it's constitutionally written. So whatever date that is, the first Tuesday in November is when I will be on, hopefully be on the official, uh, you know, ballot for District 3.
So this is a, a long process.
Yeah, it's, I, I think it's been a good way to kind of ease into it to start. And all I've been doing is meeting with people in Coweta and Noonan. And I mean, some old school people that have been natives since, um, 1820s even. And really touching base with them, not just so much to secure their vote or whether they're like, they like me, but I really want to hear them and I want to hear what some of their issues are. Uh, outside of obvious things like development or the annexations that are going on, things like that. I really kind of wanted to understand the dynamic of what progress means to them. Cause that's a very subjective word. Uh, I had another constituent that was all mad at me and he says, well, you know, there are no progress. I don't want any progress. And I'm like, well, you know, certain progress is good. If your kid grows when they're four, if they grow two inches in a year, that's progress. That's good progress, right? I mean, if you go for cancer screening and, and all of a sudden it's the, your counts are down or it's in remission. Well, that's progress. So I don't always think progress means something in a bad way.
Yeah.
Uh, but I definitely think it's a, it puts it in perspective and it means something very different to everybody else. A lot of people think, well, progress means data centers. How's that progress? So I understand everybody thinks it's something different. So meeting and talking with people, I typically do it at a breakfast. I like having breakfast. 1485 has been my spot.
Yeah. When I asked you what time you want to meet today, you're like, yeah, as early as we could possibly meet.
Yeah.
However, whenever you're ready, let's do it early. It's like, alright, he's an early guy.
Yeah, I think.
Which I think the best politicians are early risers.
Well, that's a good, that's a good endorsement there, Harold. I, uh, I just think I.
I don't know if anybody's looking for my endorsements, but.
I don't know, man. 8,000 followers apparently now, right?
Over two and a half million visitors a month, baby.
That's awesome.
I haven't promoted myself yet today. This, this episode is now about me, now how great I am.
But, uh, talking to constituents and people in Coweta and in Noonan, even people that aren't even inside my voting realm. I mean, there's only 30,000 people only that are in District 3. And if you, and only 2,700 of those were people that voted in the primary. So that's even a smaller audience, right, that I need to appeal to. But I think what's happening in Coweta, as a commissioner, I don't just vote on what happens in District 3. I vote on what happens to Coweta County. Yeah. So it's important for me to hear from all different people, walks of life, professions. And it's been really interesting having these conversations.
Do you know if anyone else in the race is getting out as early as you?
Um, no, there was someone that I heard had, was going to go in it and then they, they bowed out. Um, I haven't really heard, you know, if anybody coming in. I've heard a lot of different individuals that are running for different things, but nothing for, you know, for District 3. I expect somebody to probably come out of the woodwork. Or if Bob ends up not deciding to run and wants to endorse somebody else. I mean, you know, it just is what it is. I just know, someone did ask me in a recent conversation. They said, well, I'm curious about this. Are you just so hell bent on running that no matter who's in the race, you're going to run? And I said, well, no, 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 no. If, if somebody came in the race that I, that I personally felt like I could endorse, I'd want to meet them, talk to them a little bit, ask some questions and some concerns that I have. And if they met all the metrics and they were like a local, you know, Cowitian that everybody knew. I mean, it's a no brainer, right? That they're most likely going to win the election. And because if they just had the brand recognition, I have no problem with doing that. But just because someone else is going to run against me.
No, I, I think that is the right way to look at it if you actually are in this.
Yeah, for the right reason. That's right.
Versus.
And if I don't win.
Popularity content.
At least gave it a chance and I can always say if things happen in Coweta that I don't like, that I at least, you know, took up arms and, you know, that I, that I was able to put my foot in to say, hey, I'm not going to sit on the sidelines. I want to make a difference. And you know, I, to me, problem solving is something that I really, really enjoy. I like to hear situations and then look at it from a bigger picture. And I just, at this point in time, I'm not really sure some of that's happening at the commissioner level.
What do you think your biggest hurdle will be trying to get elected?
Just name recognition, you know, going out there, putting your signs out there and just campaigning, I guess, in general. I mean, I have heard from a lot of people in my district that like Bob Blackburn on a personal level. I mean, his family is a family name of Coweta County, but he's made some bad votes. He's also a real estate agent and, you know. Yeah, well, and I'm not saying that some of the, the Blackburn acquisitions weren't good things. I mean, you know, Piedmont Hospital had to be put somewhere, right? And just because somebody has the land on it, that doesn't bother me. I think that, that's okay, right? You don't fault somebody for owning a good piece of real estate. Now, I don't know if you voted on some of those things. That's a different argument. But I just think that, uh, there have been some folks that have been like, hey, I'm glad you're running against Bob. I'm going to vote for you. And that was a bit part of why I did it as well. As I got some really good feedback from a handful of really, really older folks that said, I think you have a chance. I think you could do it. I like where your head is. I like what you're saying to me. I like that you care. I mean, I put my money where my mouth is. On my 11 acres, I've already had somebody come and try to buy it for three times what I paid for it. I don't, I'm not going to sell it. And I have a 950 square foot house that I'm building. Not a giant monster mansion. I'm building a, a small house. It's a little bit bigger than what you would call a tiny home, but I'm kind of putting my money where my mouth is. I'm not building a, a monster, you know? I don't want to have to pay for it, but. But, uh, yeah, I'm excited to run for Coweta County and I'm excited to know where the county is, is going. And I'm excited, most importantly, by the individuals that I'm meeting on this journey for commissioner.
So then what do you think, what do you think the thing is that'll make this the most successful possibility for you? If your hurdle is getting your name out there?
I think that's really about it. I'm looking forward to the debates. I wish we would have more. So whoever is coming out, I think, I think, you know, let's, let's do that. Um, I'm not sure how that works. I know there's a handful of them, um, that are coming up. I know the chamber has a hobnob event that they do.
A hobnob?
That's what they call it officially. It's a political hobnob. Um, Candace Boothby does a good job and she puts those things out and so.
I can think about 12 different things a hobnob would be and they're all weird.
Yes, this is a, a G rated podcast.
I was thinking more like an Amish community.
Who knows what it is?
Who can make butter the fastest? It's a hobnobber.
And then between the, you know, the, the Noonan Times, uh, Harold debates. And then of course, maybe you should host a couple of debates.
Oh, I've, I've been contacting, I've been contacting the Brady team, the Beck team. They, they don't want to talk to me, so they're going to regret it because if they don't talk to me, I'm going to get someone to play as them.
Lord.
I'm going to get a little kid in here with a hand puppet and I'm going to say, this is Brady and they're going to regret it.
Well, the good part is, is you'll be able to know a lot of the policies because every candidate's pretty much put out what it is that they are looking for. So, um, maybe your, your child actor will be able to have some good, some good script, so.
That's true. So you are a member of the GOP?
I am. I, uh, I've always been, I mean, I just joined the one here in Coweta.
Saw that. I saw that just recently.
I don't think I was technically a paying member of the Republican Party ever. I've always voted for the most part. I think every single election I voted for a Republican, except Obama, when he was running in a primary against Hillary, I did not want Hillary Clinton to even have a chance. So I actually threw my, my vote for Obama in the primary just because I just couldn't have Hillary do it, which I think there's.
Paid off, I guess.
Yeah, it was, it was my vote. That's it. I, I did it, but.
Like this guy hates Hillary Clinton. It worked.
Atlanta was a very, um, a very Democrat run city, um, so there wasn't a lot of that. And when it comes to the party stuff, I'm mostly, um, Republican fiscally, um, conservative. I'm a lot more liberal about some other, you know, things, but I'm very, uh, I believe in the Republican, you know, party, more so now than I did years before. Years before it was the GOP, you know, that didn't, that always was a weird, the grand old party. That always sounded strange to me, but I kind of feel like in these last couple of years, the Republican Party has kind of switched a little bit and gotten, kind of drawn some people from the Democrat side that are fiscally responsible and don't want to see the expansions. I mean, if you think about some of the things that are happening, you know, with property rights, normally that would be a bunch of Democrats down there rallying against, you know, things that have happened for annexation and you're taking land, but it's, that's not really how it's been, right? So instead it's been more sort of the Republicans kind of sticking to the traditional values of land ownership rights, kind of the constitutionality of it. I mean, I always wondered how Lincoln was a Republican and then how did Kennedy get to it to where, you know, the GOP had sort of flip flopped on their ideas. In the 60s, the Dixiecrats, right, the Democrats were the ones that created all of the Jim Crow laws. But then Kennedy came and all of a sudden Lyndon Johnson is not a racist anymore, right? And, and a guy that, or says racially charged things and became the guy that ratified all of the civil rights rules, laws that, that Kennedy had put, you know, on his desk to sign. And then at that point, the Republican Party started to get stagnant. So I would think I was always kind of a Reagan Republican. I remember being in seventh grade and listening to this old man say stuff on TV that I enjoyed to hear. And so I'm like, man, if a, if Reagan could have kept my attention span in eighth grade, instead of me watching, you know, G.I. Joe reruns, uh, then I guess it must be something that speaks to me. And so I've always sort of been, uh, a Republican. But then there was the Mitt Romney years that weren't that great, right? Those were, those were some tough sort of times. So I kind of think the Republican Party has sort of regrouped a little bit. And, uh, you know, I, I share a lot of the values that go along with that. The traditional wholesome values that go with the, sort of the Republican Party, I agree with.
When I was in, uh, my homeschooled group, we had a mock election and you get to break up into teams and choose any president that ever been president to vouch for. So I was Team Ronald Reagan and the other team that had traction was Team Abraham Lincoln. And so we campaigned against each other and we got down to the big day where everybody voted and it ended up being a tie. We, we ran a campaign on hate.
Okay.
Like I knew a little bit about Reagan. I was like, you can't trust Abraham Lincoln. Like I'm me, so I was having fun with it, making up reasons not to trust Abraham Lincoln. But it ended up being a tie and so the pastor of the church we were at, he got to be the tiebreaker, which doesn't seem fair.
Abe Lincoln won, right?
And Abe Lincoln won by one vote because it was honest Abe. It was Abe Lincoln. And I still to this, that's why I don't support homeschooling anymore. It's because I got screwed in my Ronald Reagan mock election for Abraham freaking Lincoln.
That's a good, if you're going to get beat, that's, that's a good one to get beat by.
I guess that's a good one to get beat by.
You know, when he ran, when, when Abraham Lincoln, um, I read a book on his candidacy, on his presidency, and he had people that hated him in his grouping. He didn't choose people for partisan reasons. He chose them for who was the best person to be at the, at the positions and some of the people.
It made me feel bad.
Some of the people hated him, but he knew they were good at what their job was.
I mean, that's how it should be.
Doris, I'm trying to remember the book by Doris Kearney. I think it was her name. Anyways, I read that book, uh, and it was really, really good. So little side note there.
There's a good book, you guys.
By Doris somebody. I think it's Doris Kearns.
Alright, anytime somebody is willing to tell me what party they're affiliated with, I ask this question.
Yes, sir.
What is an area that you are the, the conservatives are big on, that you are the most liberal on? You describe yourself as fiscally conservative. What's something that you're, what is an area? What is the thing? And I asked this to liberals too. I'm like, what is the thing that you're actually really conservative on? And sometimes they give a real answer.
I mean, I'm, I'm more libertarian, I guess, in a sense that I, I'm, I'm for the government, but I do think social programs a little bit. Um, a lot of really fiscal hardcore fiscal Republicans don't really believe in the very right side. Don't really believe in a lot of social programs. And so I, I do believe in social programs, has the word social in it, right? So it has socialistic components of that is to, is to help people. But I guess I have a little bit of the fiscal side to say that I don't think someone should be on welfare for 15 years, right? There's, there's that disconnect where social programs help people and children and things of that nature. But I'm not sure that we do a good job of finding a way to get them off of it. And so I, I would say that, um, a lot of fiscal conservatives are really about cutting a lot of the social programs. Not all of them, and I say that in a broad stroke, but there are things about them. And I understand a little bit about why, because they just seem to go in perpetuity. There just doesn't ever seem to be a, let's give to fix it and get, and make them better, empower them to not be on that, right? So I think the social programs part are a way that I sort of dot the fence and say, well, I do think it, you should help in this situation, but then they're like, yeah, but for how long? And I'll go, well, you're right. I don't know the answer yet because now government's going to have to take an even bigger role to help find ways to help get them off, right? But I mean, you know, you do have to have social programs to be able, for the betterment in the pursuit of life, liberty and happiness, right? So the social programs help support that.
That's a good answer. And being able to say, I don't know the answer yet, is really tough for most people to say. Most people are like, no, I have to have an answer. It's the age of social media. You have to have an opinion. You have to have an answer. Sometimes you don't have an answer. Sometimes like, I don't know.
Well, and, and when it comes to commissioner, there's some things, I mean, that I used to say to kids, and this is a tricky one, but if you really process it, you don't know what you don't know until you need to know it. So a situation will come up and maybe you have some knowledge about it, but then when you hear some other pieces, you realize, man, I don't, I, I need more data. I need more. And so there's always going to be situations that come up in life that we all don't have the answers to, right? We try to come up with the best solution, but when I'm running for this position, I want to be able to say, hey, let's stop and take a second. None, none of the council, I mean, the people on the commission are scientists. Has anybody written the DNR and said, hey, can you chime in here and let's find out? You know, if you have any questions to the DNR about putting this data center here and you have any of that. I just don't see a lot of people really diving in, into finding out what the answers are. And that's what I want to do is I want to give the most informed answer with as much data as I can get my hands on to make that decision. And that doesn't just come from the geology reports. It comes from people that live out, specifically speaking about Project Sale, in the Sargent, you know, area. I mean, they're all on wells. There's not a lot of people out there that are on city water. There are some, but there's a lot of wells. And as you read the data, all the, just the construction from digging up the ground and stuff messes with people's wells. And so I just think, there's just a lot of pieces that I think need things to. I'd like to see the, I'd like to see them get a council together. Say, you know what? We're going to take another six months and get together a group of scientists and residents and all these people inform like a committee, an action committee to help advise us on our decisions. Something. I mean, I, you know, you just wonder where, where is everybody getting the information specifically on data centers? Other than Project Sale, which is the group that, uh, has been, they're against sale, but my goodness, the resources that come out of there, the articles they pull. One woman, uh, I don't know if I should say her name, but she visited them. She drove.
What's her name rhyme with?
Capacitor.
Okay, cool. Keep going.
So her and another girlfriend of hers drove around the country. I mean, on an 11 day tour and visited data centers, all different ones. Ones that were apparently supposed to be good ones, right? Ones that were bad ones, right? And they drove all over the place and then they gave their information to the commissioners. I was at the meeting when they handed a zip drive and said, hey, we did sound measurements and talked to neighbors. And I thought that was fantastic. I thought that should be something that data, that should be put into the paper or should be, you know, broadcasted because that's solid data. I mean, anyways, I just think that that's an important piece, um, you know, to it is, uh, to be able to use data to make decisions.
So that's where you fall on the, I guess the data center stuff is like the biggest thing right now.
It's a big deal and you know, that's where that progress word comes in that we were talking about. I'm not opposed to a data center, but it has to be in the right spot. It has to be agreed on by people in Coweta County. It has to be, you know, in, in the right spot.
Do you think that's possible though?
I do.
To be agreed on by enough people?
You're never going to get everyone to say it, but you know, there are parts of the county. I mean, isn't that Amazon monster already right off the highway? And well, what if you put it right next to that? I mean, you know, there's just some discussions because the thing that I think is important, forget where it would go. I mean, Project Sale, I'm, I am against. I'll go ahead and say it now. Based on the, from all the information that I've heard, based on the information that I heard from the gentleman that, uh, works for that organism, works for the, the natural resource department and used his data. This thing's in a recharge zone. It's, it's in a bad spot. I would say no, based on what I know to Project, uh, Sale. Um, but I, I think that, let's just say that there was a data center that majority, 90% of Cowitians would say yes to. Let's say, let's come up with that. Let's say, yes, there's one that's going to work. What kind of revenue is that? If the county is operating on a hundred and $20 million budget and you come up with 50, 60 million dollars instantly to give to that, think about what that would mean. That 66 cents that the school system operates on, well, they wouldn't really get any of that tax revenue, I don't think. I think it would mostly go to the 33% side and be able to fund those things, right? Maybe in the Sargent area, they would help that part of the educational system and that's a detail. But imagine what millions and millions of real dollars would be able to do for Coweta from social programs. I mean, do you think that would get the people off the street from behind big lots? You know, do you, I mean, there's just a lot of things that money can do. And of course, I can still see someone who's not sitting here right now being like, they won't use any of that money for that, right? Cause money seems to contort everybody and they use it how they want. But I think if a data center was going to come out and was agreed upon, I think they should talk about what some of that money would actually do. And that's an important piece that I think for, as commissioner, that I'd like to see. I mean, I'm not looking to, for buyouts, but I would like to see if Coweta County citizens have to give up a little bit of a piece of what they like to call quality of life because of data center. And I don't mean like Sale, one that's agreed upon, right? Cutting down trees and everything, no one's ever going to like that. So there's got to be a, a sacrifice that's made.
Beavers.
Beavers. And if a data center is put there, what does that mean to each person? Does that mean you freeze property taxes? Does that mean that you pay a certain percentage of property taxes? Whatever that looks like, I'd like to see a tangible component to progress, right? Or whatever that is, to go to the people. Or whatever that is, to go to the people of Calweda. Not just telling me, oh, well, that's eighty million dollars to the Calweda government. What does that mean to you and I as three oh two six five or three oh two six threeers, right? I think that's all of our.
Don't give out my zip code?
I think that's important to, to figure out what that means to people in Calweda. And I think when you're able to balance that. You're able to take a look at it. I mean, in Las Vegas, a million years ago, when the gangsters got all. Put into check and the government said, well, we're gonna put this to a vote. One of the big deciding factors for Vegas to allow gambling was, well, first it'll be on the strip. Now I think it's statewide, but. Secondly, we will pay for all the property tax. So Las Vegans don't pay any property tax, so anytime a school needs to be built. It's the gambling money that, you know, takes care of that. And I'm not asking or advocating for gambling. I mean, even though that's what I think the, the Hope Scholarship sort of does with the lottery grants, but. I, I, it was a way for people in Las Vegas to see, hey, if we give up a little bit of a piece of what we call this. Look what it does for us. I mean, zero property taxes in the city of Las Vegas, so. I'd like to sort of see some measure that replicates that in some fashion, you know, for, for Cowesians.
Um, I had a guest on here a couple of months ago. We're kinda, kinda changing topic. Who, very, very liberal, um, far left. And she believes that given in a couple of years, that Noonan is gonna just be a lot more blue. With the influx of, of the Hollywood stuff nearby and television people coming in and everything like that. Everyone I've talked to since that disagrees. But I, where do you, where do you think politically Noonan's gonna look like? In the next four or five years?
I think the Hollywood part, there's a new piece to that. When this person said that to you, maybe they didn't realize that the tax break just got pulled. From Georgia and all the studios are freaking out.
Oh, yeah?
Because, yeah, if you research, it was just in the paper. Um, I don't think it, I don't know if it was in the Noonan Times or if it was.
Breaking news before Noonan Times.
That's right, but I did read, there, there is, there is a, that tax incentive wasn't forever. It was a period of time and it's come up. They can renew it if they want to, but now other places are the new Georgia and they're starting to move and do their stuff there. With regards to politics, I mean, you know, Atlanta, you gotta think of that. The only reason why Democrats win Georgia is because of Atlanta, essentially, right? So, I mean, we touched Fulton County, um, Cobb County is very purple, so I, I do kinda think that. Um, politics are changing, but I also think right now the Republican Party is in a really interesting piece. I mean. Trump won again. If you'd have asked me. That January seventh a few years ago and said, do you think Trump will win? Win? I couldn't even believe he was the nominee again, so I've seen crazier things happen, but. I do think that as the influx of people come in, I think there'll be more Democrats here, but I think. Calweda is gonna be a minute, maybe twenty years down the road, I would see maybe making some changes, but at that point. The same way I told you how the Republican Party kinda flipped a little bit for me, maybe something will change for them. I mean, the news cycle, ten years is forever.
Yeah, that's true.
So you, you'd have to see what would, what would really, what would really happen.
Uh, in order to get endorsed properly, if anyone followed along with, with our James Shepard episode. We have to run you through a round of trivia.
Okay.
Now I'm gonna let you pick your category here today.
Okay.
Your choices are I before E, which means the answers to each question will have an I, the letter I before the letter E. Or a round on God, which are questions about God. Get a room, which is part of each answer can be combined with the word room to give you a familiar location or phrase. Monkey business, which is around on monkeys, or general knowledge. What are you feeling?
Of all those choices, I think general knowledge is a pretty good one.
I figured, okay. Alright, so you need to get three out of five of these questions correct. For me, I, I told you, James, I would vote for him then. I, I can't vote for you, cause you're not in the right district, but I'm sure I know.
Are you in Noonan here? Are you technically city of?
Yeah.
Here? Okay, cool.
Um, alright, here's question number one.
Alright, here we go.
Let's see how smart you are. According to Webster's dictionary, necessary is one of the most commonly misspelled words. How do you spell necessary?
I have to write it. N, hang on. I'm a speller. I was a good speller, but I gotta write it.
You got this.
You got a pen?
Uh, nope.
I'm, I, cause I, I do misspell words a lot, but N E C E S S A R Y.
There you go, one.
I'm sitting here writing it in my hand.
He's over here.
My daughter was in the spelling bee championship last year, so she'll be excited.
Squibbling on the table.
That's right.
Alright, question number two. You're doing well. You're doing well for America. A clouter is a name given to a group of what animal?
A, a clouter?
Clouder.
C L O U D?
C L O W D E R.
A clouter.
Cloud.
For an animal.
What group of animals is a clouter? Two teams got this right last night. I mean, there were teams of like seven people.
Alright, read me the question one last time, I'll give you the answer.
God.
Go ahead.
A clouter is a name given to a group of what animal?
Birds.
That would be cats.
And why?
Specifically domesticated cats, but I would have taken cats.
Alright, yeah. I should have known that with the kikis running around here. Uh-oh, I'm one for one.
One for one. A traditional Irish coffee is made with what type of alcohol? Do you know your alcohol?
Yeah, I mean, you, you make, um, Irish, here's Bailey's Irish cream, of course, but then you can also make it with. Um. Whiskey.
There you go. Whiskey is the answer. Two for one. You need to get one more right.
I mean, I am Timothy Patrick Ryan. If I didn't know the answer to that, I'd, I'd have to answer across the water for that.
Which newspaper does Peter Parker work, work for as a photographer?
Well, the Daily Planet is not right. That's Superman.
Superman.
Spider-Man, oh my god. James Jamison is the editor.
He's the editor. You got the people.
Man, I can s- I can, uh, don't I get like three choices? Pick it if I, if I had that. Oh my gosh, he works for, I can see the building, I can see it. This is bad. And Spider-Man's one of my favorites. It, it's not Daily Planet.
You got half of it right now. It is daily.
It is daily.
Another word you gotta get.
Examiner. Uh, it's not world. Uh, I'm gonna, this is wrong. The, the Daily Telegraph.
That's wrong. It's the Daily Bugle.
Bugle, oh, yes. Oh, no, I'm, I, this is it. This is, this is the make or break right here.
This is if you deserve our votes or not. It all comes down to these things that have nothing to do with Noonan.
Daily Bugle, dang it.
Final question. What is the name of the internet prank that involves misleading links to the nineteen eighty-seven hit? Never gonna give you up.
Uh, you've been Rick rolled.
Rick roll, yeah. You have officially been endorsed.
Awesome. Oh, that's fantastic.
Professional way po- possible.
Give you up.
Okay, you don't know the words.
But I know the melody, it's important.
Now, when you're doing your campaign, you need to have on your campaign website a link like donate here and then click it.
Harold tried to Rick roll me.
Alright, we're about to let you out. Do you have any last words? Which sounds like you're about to get on a scooter again. Do you have any words for the potential voters, for the, for the city residents, for the locals, for the PCG city people who listen that I don't want to?
Well, don't say that, but I would say that become active. You have a very good following of, of individuals, young and old. And I would say that being active and um, getting involved civically in your community is very important. And as much as you don't think your vote means anything, it does. And it doesn't just mean on election day. It means showing up to commissioner meetings. It means showing up to planning meetings and comprehensive meetings. Take an interest in what happens in your community and you'll be surprised how much you learn and how much you can affect change.